I will be Harris County Board of Commissioners meeting to order September the first, twenty twenty. And we will begin with our invocation by our head. Our Father in heaven, we thank you for another beautiful day in Harris County. Thank you for the privilege of being residents of this county. We pray, Lord, that you provide a hedge of protection for our first responders in Harris County. And also, we pray that you will give us the guidance and wisdom to make the correct decisions for our labors in this entire county. All these things we ask in the name. And if you will join me, my pleasure.
My pleasure, Jesus, to the life of the United States of America. And to the republic for which your sayings, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes. The session involves the eighteenth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion?
Motion approved.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussions. For all those in favor. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Is there an appearance of citizens? Is there any old business? Okay, under new business, we have tonight the proclamation for the American Business Women's Day in Harris County. Would you read it?
I will.
Do you mind reading it? I'm going to ask Commissioner White to read it. His voice is much better than mine.
Well, I don't know about that.
Well, it is.
It just might be louder. Proclamation, American Business Women's Day in Harris County. Annually, the Harris County chapter of the American Business Women's Association, A B W A, requests a proclamation to recognize September twenty-second as American Business Women's Day in Harris County. Proclamation. Whereas, the American Business Women's Association was founded in nineteen forty-nine and is a national association of working women that has a strong tradition of promoting the advancement of women. And whereas, business economics, oh, boy, I maybe I spoke too soon. And social analysts indicate that the current trends of women entering the workforce and attaining increasingly responsible positions will continue to contribute to the betterment of businesses and communities. And whereas, the mission of the American Business Women's Association is to bring together businesswomen of diverse occupations and to provide opportunities for them to help themselves and others grow personally and professionally through leadership, education, networking, support, and national recognition. And whereas, American Business Women's Association Day was initiated in nineteen eighty-two as a national day on which Americans can recognize the achievements of the millions of employed women in the United States. And whereas, joint congressional resolutions were passed in nineteen eighty-three and nineteen eighty-six designating September twenty-second as National American Business Women's Day. Now, therefore, the Harris County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim Tuesday, September twenty-second, twenty twenty, as American Business Women's Day in Harris County. So proclaim this first day of September, twenty twenty, Harris County Board of Commissioners. And after reading it, I'll make the motion that we adopt it.
And I'll second that. Is there any discussion? Okay, there's a motion and a second. We have our proclamation. All those in favor. And the motion carries. And we have some of those representatives from A B W A. Do you want to add?
I'll come up and have a picture.
Yes. Do you want to vote? We have a face. We'll just, yeah, y'all can just stand right there. Just, can you get us on, maybe?
Yes, fine. How much she gets? Okay. Everybody look, point, look at y'all. Can I hurry?
That's right.
Two, three.
Randy's not standing.
Thank you.
I was, alright, she wants to display it, so I got a backup.
One, no.
Alright, she ready? One more time. We got to look like the Lord, right? Count to three. One, two, three. Gotcha.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Thank you. Would you raise your hand here?
Okay, the next item on the new business is the resolution to accept Hudson Trail Creek Side Way in Hudson Meadow subdivision, phase one, section two. All documents necessary for the acceptance of Hudson Trail and Creek Side Way in Hudson Meadow subdivision, phase one, section two, have been received. And the resolution, our acceptance of the two is given on paper. There is a motion and a vote needed to accept the votes. Is there a motion?
How many did we approve?
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? I'll second. Is there any discussion? Okay, there's no discussion. All those in favor, except for Hudson Trail and Creek Side Way, please raise your hand. I have a motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Allen, County Manager, agenda items.
May I, Chairman of Board of Commissioners, item number four. Doing work for replacement telephone system. In your agenda package, you have a agenda item. In the I T budget this year, that budget contains sixty-five thousand dollars to purchase a replacement telephone system for the administration building courthouse, community development building, EMS headquarters, station one, extension service, sheriff's office, jail, I T office, and the C M E building. R F P specifications were prepared, distributed, advertised, and made in June. What was requested was a new and expandable voice-over I P telephone system with modern features, installation, employee training, and ongoing support. On the deadline date of July second, the county received eighteen responses, which was a healthy response. A selection committee consisting of myself, the I T director, and the Cook and Supreme Court reviewed all the responses and selected the top three companies for personal interviews and demonstration of their projects, or their products. They were Log Me In USA, E S I Systems, and Verizon Wireless. After personal interviews, product demonstrations, and reference checks, the selection committee selected Log Me In with ACOM as a local servicing representative to continue the process and develop more detailed scope of work. You know, name a system manufacturer, system features, timeframe, for installation, detailed price, payment schedule, maintenance, support cost, replacement prices, and warranty information. And this will all align with the R F P specifications. The system manufacturer will be the industry standard yielding products. And telephone features will have many, and these are just a few. Programmable automated attendant, integrated directories, four-digit inter-office styling, call routing, call pickup, call transfer, call forwarding, speakerphone capabilities, music on hold, voicemail, voicemail-to-email transcriptions, speed dial extensions, number display, caller ID, find me, follow me features, which are pretty cool, modern features. Conference calls, portability to go to video meeting access, and text messaging, among others. We are buying a service, not a system. So the pricing structure is as follows. Log Me In through ACOM, their local provider, will provide one hundred thirty-eight telephone headsets for one time costing five thousand three hundred sixteen dollars and ninety-four cents on a government rate. And the county would own the headsets, and they would have one-year warranty. ACOM would charge two dollars per cable drop if needed. And the service for this, the monthly service, would be one thousand eight hundred thirty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. It's a thirty-six month contract, or right at twenty-two thousand dollars per year for a three-year contract. The service fee would include cloud hosting, so there would be nothing on the county premises. This is all hosted in the cloud, with redundancy in many U.S. cities. Local long-distance calling, periodic software upgrades, maintenance, go-to-meeting access. The service fee would be spread over main departments and their budgeted telephone line items. Replacement headsets, if damaged, would cost to replace sixty-eight dollars to one hundred thirty-five, depending on the model. Upon expiration of the thirty-six-month contract, the monthly service fee would remain the same and continue month to month or year to year. Headsets will be replaced upon obsolescence, which is usually in excess of five years. Right now, our service is with A T and T. And once this new system is in and operating, the county will disconnect various existing A T and T phone lines and computer lines that would not be needed. In addition, long-distance service that is now a separate charge will be included in the new system at no charge. It's already built in that one thousand eight hundred twenty-two dollar service fee. These two items will save the county an estimated amount of three thousand dollars per month. So we're going to save three thousand dollars a month, but we're going to spend eighteen hundred dollars per month, which is a savings. Lastly, all departments' web acts and Zoom annual subscriptions could be eliminated since the go-to-meeting platform is included with the new system. If approved, this motion can be completed within sixty to ninety days or late November. The current Owatso telephone system is at the end of its useful life, has minimal salvage value, but will be disposed of on GoToDeals.com. And this has future expansion capabilities at minimal cost. We have the I T director here, along with Log Me In, ACOM representatives here, to answer any questions to board behalf.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion is approved.
And there's a motion and a second?
No, a second.
Okay. It's a motion and a second. Is there a discussion or any questions?
Ask questions. We are saving three thousand dollars a month on what we are replacing or on what includes now watermark facilities, maintenance, feeing maintenance, prison, and E S.
No, that is all extra. Those are future expansions that we might continue this fiscal year.
We might be considering, but we may not.
We may not. Correct, correct. So, but we budget sixty-five thousand. Of that, we're going to spend on the headsets, five thousand three sixteen. So we're not going to spend sixty thousand of it.
Plus the eighteen thirty-two.
And the eighteen thirty-two, well, that's where we need to get everybody's budgets, under telephone expenses, correct.
Okay.
So that's where we go.
Right. This company, I'm sure it's a regular company.
Log Me In, yes.
And ACOM in Columbus, what would their role be? I know they're the local service provider. Are they going to be doing the installation? Are they going to be just the service after the installation?
I'll let Amy Russ talk to them.
I appreciate the opportunity to come up today and talk to you guys about this. Basically, ACOM will handle everything. It's like a light on service. We chose Log Me In because they're just a really good partner. They've got a tremendous phone system. And the fact is, we think that it's going to be much better for the county rather than trying to sell you another phone system. The Owatso is into life. Can't get parts for it anymore, you know. This new phone system really will live in the cloud, like you said. And again, we will install service, program, provide support, training. Pretty much everything that we've done, you know, for the past ten years or so for the Owatso system.
And what other government entity like us has that brand? Is there anybody else around here that's using that particular brand?
So there are some pretty large state organizations using the brand. No local municipalities that I know of. We're talking city, wasn't one right now, City of Allen, I think. Lynette is actually moving towards it. Muskogee County has been in talks with us about it. They just went through a phone R F P like a year and a half ago. So they've committed to a smaller product that I understand, I guess, they're not very happy with at the moment. But I can't speak to that a hundred percent. We have moved a number of our customers to.
So you say there was some in Atlanta, some or state agencies that added this?
There's some large state agencies outside our footprint. I think there's a large organization in Connecticut that is. I could get you a full list of those who Log Me In.
None in Georgia?
None in Georgia that I know of. Again, our footprint is pretty much South Atlanta through Western Georgia and Central Georgia. So I would have to get you a list of those.
This is going to be a fairly new system to Georgia?
It's actually not fairly new. JAB started out about ten years.
Nobody else in Georgia has it, is it?
Well, nobody that I can speak to. Yeah, I'd have to get you a list of those. And I'm sure I could get them before we left today. I mean, Log Me In is a very large organization, and people have been using Log Me In for a move for a long time. Go-to-meeting is a part of Log Me In. Almost everybody knows what Go-to-meeting is. JAB was actually purchased on Log Me In to make part of that bundle of Go-to-meeting. And the bigger thing about JAB is that, unlike a lot of other carriers, they make and write their own software. So this phone system that you're buying is actually distributed across ten data centers across the country. It's the only carrier that really has true competency. And we went through vetting a number of these carriers about a year ago because we saw that it doesn't make sense for you guys to invest sixty thousand dollars in a box, you know, sticking it in a wall. And the other part is, that's not redundant. I mean, if the internet goes out, phone goes out here, you guys are dead in the water today. A lot of companies were the same way. So when we vetted these companies, we chose a company that could actually fail over from state to state, from region to region. And Log Me In was the only company that could truly do that, so.
So I know you can't predict the future, but knowing how quickly technology is changing, what do you think the life of this new system will be? I mean, people have been doing voice profiling.
That's right.
What would be the life of this? I mean, is there a newer technology, like right on the brink, that we're just going to miss five years on?
There's nothing that's going to replace your telephone anytime soon. I mean, business is done primarily by emailing telephone today. So while telephones are evolving, they're not going to go away. I can tell you that you guys are kind of on that cutting edge because it's going to be in the cloud. And everybody says cloud. What does that mean? It's not up in the sky. It's somebody else's computer, data center, blah, blah, blah. But at the end of the day.
Where are those data centers? Where are they?
So there's one in Atlanta, there's one in New York, there's one in Indiana, California, Washington. There are the four. I don't know.
So our information will probably be in Atlanta.
Your information will be in Atlanta. The closest failover, I think, is Texas. All of them will fail over to each other, but there's a certain order that certain regions fail over by. The biggest thing I can say about you guys being in the cloud is that where we limited to replacing cards and these pieces of hardware in the past, now when there's an update and they add a feature, you guys should be, I mean, it's not like there's anything to add. The only thing that you could foreseeably replace is if you get a fancier phone on your desk where you decide that you want one with a giant webcam. And, you know, there are some features coming down the pipe that really pertain to the handset that you stick on the desk. But the biggest thing is, again, I mean, these cloud systems come with a lot of functionality. And all of it, as it gets added, it's just a software update. So you guys don't pay anything else for it, and it gets added to your system.
And I'm sure our attorneys looked at the contract, so this is what will stay the same for three years. And then you said that this service, at the end of three years, is going to continue at the same price?
Yes.
Or?
So if you can take the same price, we can negotiate for a lower rate. So you guys actually got a phenomenal rate, being a government rate, and we did some extra, you know, pulling for you. So you got a low-usage seat, which is typically nine dollars for this count, and then six dollars and ninety-five cents. And you got a full-usage Go-to-meeting, call recording, free fax, unlimited, a lot of other features for fifty-nine-five. That seat typically sells for twenty-five ninety-five. So you got a really strong discount. I can't say in three years you're going to get a cheaper price. But I have to imagine, like, internet and everything else, the price is just going down.
According to this, we won't get a higher price?
You will not get a higher price.
Is that in the contract?
You will. We can make sure it's been in the contract. I'm not sure if y'all know, ACOM's been around for forty-seven years, right? So when we chose the system, we didn't choose the system that we're going to follow. We're not going to be gone in two years. We have to support this for the next three years, for you. So we had to pick something that's going to be reliable, and it was the best one for our customers. The other thing that's going away is we currently charge about four hundred dollars a month in service for the existing Owatso. That goes away. So not only are you guys not spending as much on your A T and T phone service, but now the support agreement you've been paying for is going away as well, because that's included in the monthly amount.
Thank you.
And do I just have any discussion? There is a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion carries.
The next item is number five, project updates. The fish for years, two months old. And a lot of things are getting done. Number four, replacement telephone system. The board approved that today. We'll be getting the installation soon. Number six. The new equipment for the commissioning room to allow live sharing and recording of meetings has been ordered completion by late October to have that installed. Number eleven. The replacement energy recovery unit at the courthouse, that's happening, can be completion by late this month. Number fifteen, disposal of the old ten-thousand gallon underground fuel stores tonight. Georgia Oil and Services are, we're working with them to pull that out of the ground by early October. Twenty-four, malleys down. We're still preparing bits specs that should go out probably next week. Number twenty-nine, railster trails. The engineering is being done. The engineers have finished the survey and are doing design right now. Number thirty-two, the airport's flagpole is completed. And the flag is fire.
Good.
And it's lit up at night. It's lit up at night. Solar power.
Good.
Solar power. Number forty-two, Rebelville Library uses plus twenty-one team funds. The attorney now preparing lease agreements and M O Us. Number forty-five. The county's land use code update. Focus group meetings have been held. I think there's one or two more to be remaining. And there's going to be community workshops on September twenty-second and twenty-third at the community center. A flyer has been prepared and put on the website, and it is being distributed for drop-in community workshops on September twenty-second, twenty-third at the community center. That's about it. Interestingly, on this, on this lost and lost collections, we've had record highs last month, record highs. Everybody's been, "Local dog area. Stay away from congested areas." If you can see on loss, on this lost chart, the county received in July, three hundred twenty-one thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars. Again, a record high for the month of July. So we are way ahead of schedule. On the lost, same kind of scenario. On the lost is two hundred thirty-four thousand five hundred. Again, that's a record high. We're going to exceed the budget on that. The T's plus just came in, that was like ninety-five thousand. So that's kind of on par. And building permits for August is twenty-two. So we have a total of forty-three this fiscal year so far, forty-three so far. And that's about it. We have the extra expenses the board may have.
Forty-eight for the county's.
Okay. Yes. The thirty percent has been received, and it's in the county's coffers. The seven percent deadline was today. And we put all the information in our computer system, and it was uploaded last week. We're still waiting for approval from the state.
So what are some of the expenses that are in that?
They're all public safety, employees, salary, and benefits.
And the seventy percent also?
Yes.
What about number thirty? Number thirty-nine, what is the timeline in that water port?
It hasn't got started yet.
You know, when, or when it was on?
No. Nothing, nothing, nothing yet.
What about that bridge on the dirt road? Are they looking at specs or plans or something for that?
Yeah, the specs have been done, and it's out of bid.
It is out of bid.
So on, um, on number twenty-two, repair three bridges, that is repair five bridges. The three you see on item twenty-two, plus number twenty-three, plus dirt. So all five bridges are a bid, with the dirt road going first. It was, put it in the bits specs to go first. And the bid opening is?
September.
September tenth. For all five.
And just for those who are interested, the course and red bridge is scheduled to be open the end of November. That's the schedule now. Anybody have anything else? I'm ready. Okay. Last item on our agenda tonight is the proposed lease agreement for corporate hangar at Harris County Airport. Russell.
Yes, Madam Chairman, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Great, thank you, Madam Chairman. A member of the board on your agenda tonight, as the chairman noted, is a proposed lease agreement on the corporate hangar at the airport. And the board notes that corporate hangar has been vacant for some time. However, Rebel Aviation Services LLC of Sharpstown, Georgia has submitted proposals to lease the corporate hangar to house various aircraft, providing aircraft and leasing services from the hangar. The lease has been prepared and is under review by Rebel, the airport manager, the county manager, the airport consultant, and of course, myself. And this lease is built off the senior lease that we have issued for with a few specific terms to afford this entity. The lease will initially be twenty-one point five months, duration of automatic renewals, and the rental rate will be one thousand nine hundred dollars per month, which is the established rate as of January first, two thousand eighteen, which I believe was approved by a board policy. And with regards to termination, either party can terminate the lease without cause with an notice. And a motion is voted needed for this.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion?
A motion that we accept the proposed lease agreement for the corporate hangar with Rebel Aviation Services LLC.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, ma'am, please. I just want a little clarification in reading through this, Russell, I'm just hearing, like. They seem to be not just leasing the space for particular aircraft, but actually as they see to a business that may do some work on the airplanes, which would be competing with current in-house guy. Does this company, do you know anything about them? You know, we have had discussion in the past about whether the county wants to continue to run this airport or whether we want to look for a fixed base operator. Is this company, or has it been, a fixed base operator anywhere else? Or has any conversations with them indicated that they might want to grow that and have that opportunity in the future?
Breeding, as this happens, does it now? Yeah, it's with Rebel.
Is Rebel here? Are you Jared?
I am.
So Jared Breeding is here to answer any questions the board may have and to maybe talk about rail rates.
Okay, there's several points.
Russell, Jared Breeding is here. He's talking next.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We very much appreciate the consideration for business at the Harris County Airport. And like I said, Jared Breeding, I've been in aviation business most of my life, for the last twenty-five years. And I've been a commercial airline pilot for most of them, but also. but also in the maintenance field. And so anyway, I'd love, basically, I'm just excited to try to work with Harris County, work in Harris County and establish as much, as much service as we can for the aviation community. That's, that's my goal mostly. And offer instruction, pretty much anything to do with aviation if someone's interested or if they're an aircraft owner or operator or have an interest in it.
Have you all run whole airports?
No, ma'am, this, this pretty much start up for myself. It's something I've always been involved with, but not as an actual owner or startup myself.
So you're a new company?
Yes, ma'am.
Since, by now?
Yeah, yes, since.
This is your first?
Hopefully, yes.
This is your first?
It is, yes, ma'am.
I have a question. Since the proposed services may be complementary at times, what does that mean, and competitive at times?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure about that statement, but, uh...
In the argument that, you know, with Baker Automotive, not Baker Automotive, Baker Aerial.
Yeah.
Uh, they do maintenance of aircraft. They want to do maintenance with aircraft. Also, if sometimes with, with Ben, Baker is maybe busy, it might be complementary. But if it's not busy, it might not, it might be competitive. So at certain times...
Oh, complementary as in side by side?
Correct.
Not three?
Correct, oh, no, no, no.
Okay, that's what I was like.
Info-josh you with.
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, I have spoken with Baker Aerial. And as far as the customers he now has on the field, on the airport, I haven't spoken with him directly about this, but I've talked to some of his customers that, and I'd just, I'd rather Ben keep his customers at the airport. And as far as complementary, I think that activity would promote activity. So therefore, the more activity we have at the airport, I thank Baker Aerial and the county and myself for all the benefit. I really believe that. But I, direct competition, I don't have any intent to take his current customers away from him in any way, so.
And this would free up two other tea hangers for Rebel?
At least two.
At least two.
At least two. Because this hangar is a big, it's a huge corporate hangar, and it could fit probably between two large aircraft and maybe five or six smaller aircraft.
Yeah.
And, and in the future, it could be avionics, maintenance, charter services, instructions. So it, it could be a positive thing for, for the airport. So.
So I would think $1,900 a month is a good rate?
Yes, ma'am, that's a, of course, my proposal was a lot less. And I, I didn't know if this would be the time to discuss that or not. But I kind of more planned on somewhat lesser rate as far as my planning and business model. But I may have to do other considerations that that's, you know, that the board is going to ready for that, that leasing now.
I had one other question, and I guess this is ready. Um, there, I saw in here somewhere, there is, there's a 10% sublease requirement, is that a standard?
No, there's not. Basically, in the typical hangers, there is no sublease available at all. But under this one, sublease was attractive to them. But, and so if they sublease the space, do the county would get a portion of that sublease available?
Just, okay, so for example, I fly in the day, I need somewhere to, whatever you all do, park the aircraft. And what, now, does that consider sublease?
No.
That is not considered.
No, that's, that's transit.
So it'll be a long term? Okay.
If long term...
It's a long term.
Meaning...
Okay, monthly perhaps?
Maybe, maybe a month.
Okay.
Like, I would put my hangar here, I would put my aircraft here for a month. Would you sublease to me? So instead of coming to the board and subleasing and doing all the agreements, they would have the authority to sublease. But I, I don't even, probably pretty rare circumstance.
Well, uh, one, one instance I could just right off the hand. You know, sometimes customers, I've noticed other shops or other maintenance facilities, if a customer leaves the airplane over a certain amount of time, they have to be charged a certain rate because that, that hangar space is very valuable as far as, you know, so kind of helps promote, get the customer's airplane back to them as soon as possible. But then there's other times at, at Harris County, we do have transits coming in. A lot of times, this hangar is usually sit through the house. If people request that, you know, house their planes overnight for a week, or I would only intend to stay. So, yeah.
Okay, that's all the questions I have. Now, do you have any other questions?
Welcome. If your vote goes well, we'd like to have that.
Would we, would we put a sign up advertising this corporate hangar? Or we just not go, tell our customers? I mean, I'm just curious.
He wouldn't like it.
Yeah, that's the thing. If he puts a sign up, he can put it on the hangar?
There is provisions to allow a sign. According with the county's side orders.
You know, if he's out there and he doesn't advertise, and that is not going to help him, it's not going to help the airport.
Right.
I mean, same with, with anybody. I mean, with Baker Aerial or whoever.
Right, so we, we put in the, in the lease agreement a provision for having a sign on the exterior. But, but it has to comply with the county's side orders. You know, so, so they figure, um, place for...
Or travels along your paths.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
I think this kind of goes along with what the airport committee has certainly talked about the past, and I'm sure still continuing to do so. It helps draw other aircraft-related businesses that might be in support of his operation too, and help us begin to develop some of that capacity.
Thank you, Mr. Brady.
Thank you.
You all got a motion and a second, three other discussion?